United States of America.
A two way republic for which stands one nation. Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item, can we get a roll call vote?
Well, Ms. Castle is the one that.
She's gonna be late with, with notice.
So who's doing the? So who's doing the notes, Mr. Kimball?
I give up, I'm steering the ship here, so.
It goes to, it goes to the secretary, or the VP, or the board president. Or the treasurer.
Debbie's muted.
Debbie can unmute, she's having a problem unmuting.
There we go.
I know.
There we go. So it's the treasurer, VP, board president.
Who would like to do that?
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Oh. Mr. Kimball?
Here.
Mr. Holcomb?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Pittman?
Here.
And Ms. Castle will be late with.
With notice.
Notice, with notice.
Okay, next item. Public fundamentals. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. The public has an opportunity to speak at each board meeting. Period of time known as public comments is set aside. Each meeting, your parents and other citizens to speak directly to the board about school-related topics. Do we have anybody for that?
Participants, if you want to raise your hand, if you would like to participate in public comments. Anyone? I don't know if they can't, if they're unable to raise their hand, or. Okay, let me ask again, anyone? Wanting to participate in public comments? I don't have any hands up, Mr. Kimball.
All right, I seem to have a problem with my screen right now, all I can see is myself.
Go up into the top and hit the.
Gallery?
Switch camera, or, no, my bad.
Is it gallery, is that what they call it?
Gallery, gallery.
And Mr. Abdullah, maybe, maybe unmute everybody, maybe they don't know how to raise hands, or maybe they can't raise their hand.
Okay, all right, I'll try that.
All right, this thing does not give me that option. It's a gallery. None of it. What gives me is green screen background. All right, well, I'm good at seeing who's talking, that's fine.
Okay, I'm just personally unmuting everyone, and asking again, is anyone interested in participating in public remarks? So, Mr. Kimball, I've asked three or four times, I don't see any hands up.
Let's move along then to superintendent's report.
Mr. Kimball, the only thing that I have, that the governor at 3:00 PM released her return to school framework. We are gonna meet the next few days, the entire task force has a lot of homework to review.
Uh oh.
And so, other than that, we don't have any.
Robot.
Angel, you're cutting out.
Okay, the only, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, the only thing that I have is that the governor released at 3:00 PM her return to school roadmap. I forwarded it to the task force, we all have a lot of homework to do. But other than that, we, I don't have anything from the superintendent's report at this time.
Excuse, excuse me, board president, Mr. Abdullah had, you.
With Scott?
I wanted Mr. Abdullah had to report from Brad.
Van Zik.
Our, Brad Van Zik, our email that we received.
I have, I've seen it last minute, but I haven't had time to review it, Ms. Scott. I did see the email, but I have not had time to review the email, to discuss it.
Couldn't we just read his email?
And speaking of the.
Who's talking?
Okay, I muted everyone because there was people talking in the background, and I'm not sure who it is, so I'm only gonna unmute the trustees at this time.
I asked Mr. Abdullah had, I asked if, is there a reason why we just can't read his email?
I'm not prepared to, to.
Okay.
To discuss it right now, if you could give me, let me review the email, and then I could give you my reflection on it. I've not even had a chance to even review what you guys discussed yesterday.
Beth Wall has seen the email.
Who's the, who's the email from? I'm looking at email, I'm not seeing.
I believe it was to the, the board, not to the, the board, Mark, it was to the, the group.
I think it was to Beth and Angel, and I believe I was copied on it also.
Still not everybody.
I'm not sure, I'm.
Is anybody waiting for me to respond, or something?
What are we waiting for?
I believe Mr. Abdullah has probably reading the email.
No, I, I was waiting on you guys, I'm not prepared to discuss this.
He said he's not prepared to discuss it.
Well, all right, then let's, let's, let's move on. Board of Education action items, the first order is an employee matter, which requires us to go into closed session.
Under section 8A, 8AE of Employee Act, Mr. President, you gotta, you gotta say why, I believe.
Well, it'd be nice to be in my book here, then.
Can we explain that people can stay in this meeting while we leave and we'll come back, please?
Yeah. So, so, members of this meeting, what we're gonna do, once we make a motion to go into closed session. You, you all could stay in this meeting, we're gonna step out and join a separate meeting, and then we'll rejoin. I'm gonna transfer host, power to Sarah Muller, I'll stop recording, we will rejoin shortly, so if you wanna just stand by here. And I'm, at this time, trust, you, you have to take action on the motion to go into closed session, and then once you do that, and you.
Okay, hold on. Under Employee Act. AE, or 8AE, we're requesting you want a closed session, I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Any discussion? Nope, okay. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. With Barb not here, so we would say motion passes, six to zero.
All right, how do we leave this meeting to go to another?
So, at the bottom, it says leave meeting, so you could leave meeting and join the other one that I sent you.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna transfer host over.
I'm gonna reposition this thing, because it is not showing me those controls at all.
Sarah Muller, I'm gonna make you host now.
Meeting. Or just press leave?
Yes.
And we'll, we'll have to come back to this one, though, right, we'll have to be re-entered, yeah, okay, all right.
All right, I'm not getting the leave button.
Sarah Muller, I made you host. I'm gonna mute all except for the trustees.
Just let me know when we're ready.
One second, I just wanna unmute the trustees. Okay, I believe, let me just rename you.
There's a few that are not muted in the gallery, Mr. Abdullah had.
I think that might be one of the trustees, that might be Mr. Holcomb.
No.
No, Mr. Holcomb, muted.
Oh.
I apologize, I cannot get my picture back up there, trying.
All right, just let me know when we're ready, Mr. Abdullah had, I'll bring us back.
Um, I see Beth, I see Deb, Gloria, Mark Kimball, Barbara Castle, Bill Pittman, Mark Holcomb. That's all the trustees. And it is 6:32, and you gotta, don't forget to motion to get back from closed session.
Well, usually I bang the gavel and announce we're back, you don't do a motion for that, I don't believe.
Or, or, I forgot how to, yeah.
All right, we're back in session at 6:32. Next on the agenda is a board action item, employee matter. And it is recommended, motion to accept Mr. Abdullah had's recommendation to terminate for reasonable and just pause. Did we put, put the name on there?
Yeah, you gotta say their name.
That's Andrew Banafa. Will someone take that motion?
I'll take it.
All right, do we have a second? Who will second that?
I'll second it, I guess.
All right, Mr. Holcomb, thank you. And discussion, and we gotta be careful what we discuss, as Mr. Pittman pointed out. Does anybody have anything?
Mr. Kimball, is there effective date on that motion?
Today. I believe today, we're at the meeting now, yeah.
Okay.
All right, if that's it, let's go to a roll call vote.
All right, Mr. President. Ms. Scott?
My vote is no, because I don't feel well informed.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mrs. Ott?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
No.
That leaves me, Ms. Castle, and I'm going to vote yes. Motion passes five, or, yeah, five to two.
All right, next motion. It is recommended, Board of Education approve the NDPS employment agreement as presented. I'll make the motion on that, if someone wanna second that?
Mr. President, I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ott. Discussion?
Mr. President, is this for all of the employment agreements, or just, are we doing one at a time?
Uh, we do have some separate ones.
All right, so it'll be separate?
I believe we have some separate ones, or, no, wait, hold on. No, that's for all of them.
Yeah.
They were provided in the packet, each one was provided in our packet.
Right.
There's, Mr. Pittman, there's nothing stopping you from discussing each one individually.
Yeah, no, I, I just didn't know if we were going to do each one, or, I've read them all.
Okay, if there's no discussion, then roll call vote, please.
Did you make a motion, Mr. President?
Yes, a motion was made, it was seconded, and discussion's over, we're doing a roll call vote now.
I'm sorry, could you please review for me, as I'm keeping track? The first and second.
Recommended, the Board of Education approve Madison District Public Schools employment agreements as presented. We're at the point of voting at this point.
Mr. Kimball was first, Barb, and I was second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we're ready for a roll call vote. Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Ott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
And Ms. Castle's vote is a yes, motion carries seven, zero.
Okay, next item, it's recommended, the Board of Education approve service contract with Oakland Schools. Enable the district to receive IT services through Oakland Schools. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. President.
All right, discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Pittman?
I, I'd like to, I have a few questions. So, is this above and beyond the one that we, the IT person that we approved a few months ago for $18 an hour?
Something.
No, Mr. Mr. Pittman.
This, this replaces all covered.
Can I answer, Mr. Mr. President, can I answer, Mr. Pittman?
Yes, correct, Mr. Abdullah.
Mr. Pittman, even though the board approved that $18 an hour, we never hired him because, you know, all of COVID. So we're, we are not gonna hire that position anymore, because we're not renewing all covered. We, we already know, gave them notice that we are not renewing them, and we are not hiring that eighteen an hour, eighteen an hour position. Instead, we're engaging Oakland Schools.
Okay, so Oakland Schools will replace the eighteen and the, all covered, okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. Has this already started, or does this, it says July 1st, but has this already started?
They started early, just connecting our fiber, because we were gonna lose our E-rate, so, all covered. We're not being successful with, with connecting our fiber, after several months. I told them just to stop the job, because they weren't doing it. Oakland Schools said, we'll go ahead and connect that at no charge for you, so that saved us an additional $10,000, nearly $10,000.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? I, I will, I will say that there's been several conversations with myself and Mr. Abdullah had, because of complaints regarding the internet. And I think this change will be a positive one for the district, definitely. And how does this compare crosswise, Mr. Abdullah had?
I think all covered was 72,000, don't quote me exactly, plus additional fees. Oakland Schools, right now, the first year is 90,000, but that is all in, and if you take away that no charge of fiber connection. That's $9,000 that all covered had quoted us, so right off the bat, it's almost an even wash on the first year. And, Mr. Pittman, I'm not sure if you recall Wes Prescott, he used to be here in the district?
Oh, yeah.
Um, he, you remember him?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, so he's back in the district now, even though he's supporting us from Oakland Schools, but he's there, he's very knowledgeable about our district. But Oakland Schools brings a boatload of people with them, supporting us, they're, they're just. Well, well-versed in, in all our IT services, really happy about that connection we, we're doing with, with them.
Yep, and sometimes you get what you pay for, is what I say as well, so. If there's nobody else, let's do a roll call vote.
Did I hear somebody wanted to speak?
Oh, it sounds like a, a.
Okay. Roll call, you're ready for a roll call vote, then, Mr. President?
We are.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ott?
Mrs. Ott lost connection, she just texted me, her internet went down at home.
Okay.
So she, she's not here.
All right, Ms. Castle is a yes, so the motion carries six, zero.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'd like to interrupt here for a second, I think we need to pause and wait for Ms. Ott. Not to exclude another board member, please.
She gave us notice.
Well, if she doesn't have internet, we could be here all night.
Well, okay, so it, um, Mr. Abdullah had, can you ask Ms. Ott if she does not want to return, or cannot return to the meeting?
Uh, let me, I'm gonna mute myself, and then I'm gonna give her a call, to see if she wants to do like, either FaceTime, or if she wants to proceed without her, okay, one second.
Yes, thank you.
Move back, they don't look happy, good. Mr. Butcher, please mute yourself.
Can anybody see me? I, I can't tell if I'm on or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm wondering what you're doing at the middle school parking lot, though.
I'm going in and out, I don't know why, it's so crazy.
Good picture, I'm waiting for a car to come screaming through there, possibly run you down.
It looks like I got the group behind me, you know, just waiting on me.
You look, you look like a reporter or something.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
She's gonna try to go to her nephew's house, I asked her if she wants us to proceed or wait, we could. She just responded, proceed, and she'll try to log in. That's what she just told me, you could proceed, and she's gonna log in from her nephew's.
All right, then, let's go with the next motion. Recommended, the Board of Education approve the contract for someone to obtain occupational therapist services. I'll make the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Now, is this a renewal of a provider we're already using, Mr. Abdullah had?
Yeah, so this is contracted services. We, we got them last year for occupational therapy and physical therapy, we're just renewing them, absolutely.
All right, that's all I got, anybody else? Nope, all right, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. President, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
And that leaves me, I believe. Ms. Castle's a yes, motion carries six, zero.
All right, next motion. Recommended, the Board of Education approve the contract for EDU healthcare to obtain the services of a physical therapist. I'll take that motion, anyone want a second?
A second, second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holcomb, discussion. Nope, okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball? Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Castle's a yes, motion carries six, zero.
All right, next item, it's recommended, the Board of Education approve the NWEA MAP licensing K through 12. Be used to assess student growth for the upcoming 2020, 2021 school year. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, President. Sorry, Bill.
No, it's all right.
Give me the talk.
I'll, I'll take, take Mr. Mr. Pittman's second, because he hasn't talked much in this week.
All right, we'll take his second, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Mr. Abdullah had, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Thompson.
This is for 12 months, correct?
Yes.
School year for 2020 to 2021 school year.
Okay. It's the entire school year, we're correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Technically, this would begin, what, tomorrow, and we go through June 30th of 2021.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
All right, Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball? Ms. Castle is a yes, motion carries six, zero.
All right, next item, it's recommended that the. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the bids selected to purchase a comprehensive reading program, K two five and print, digital formats also, the purchase of a virtual educational suite program. I'll make the motion, do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Discussion, I got a quick question, is this something that Oakland Schools had pre-bid? Mr. Abdullah had?
No, no, the, we, we put those out for bid, Mr. Kimball.
Okay, so when these come back, we're gonna select a bid, is that right?
We already selected the bid, that's why it's coming before you. We opened the bid at twelve PM on June twenty-sixth. I had myself, Dr. Hill, and Lawrence Miller present. We took notes. We announced the bids out loud. We signed in, and now we're presenting you our recommendation.
Okay, anybody else? Help, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Castle, yes. Six zero.
All right, last item. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the insurance renewal for property casualty and workers' compensation insurance with SAG. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Thompson, discussion. I'll start, Mr. Abdullah had, this is in fact SAG, the self-insure pool that we belong to, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and based on self-insurance, we really don't have much choice, do we?
We don't have much choice, and if you notice, there's an increase because the five-year trend in this district, the, the percentage loss ratio is two hundred and fifty-two percent on a five-year and four hundred and sixteen percent on a ten-year from all the previous claims.
Okay.
When I called, when I called Travis to ask him why the increase, and he said, you know, it's unfortunate, even though what you guys have done is, is commendable, that you really are paying for, I'm not sure if you use the sins of the past, but because we've had so many claims, that it's gonna take us a few years to dig out of that hole, to get ourselves in a, in a good.
Well, to, to explain this where people don't understand, when you're self-insured, you're clustered with a group of other businesses or municipalities, and basically the people at, the group as a whole is paying the claims. So, there's no such thing as a free lunch, and when will we see this trend?
Well, it's been, it's been about a, a year and a half since we've done any claims. And so, another three years, we should be good.
So unfortunately, this is something beyond our control, but we have to be insured, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm satisfied, anyone else? Now, roll call vote, please.
All right, Mr. Kimball?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Ms. Castle, yes, motion carries six zero.
All right, any committee reports by anybody? No? I would seriously doubt any committee reports with COVID nineteen. All right, then I guess we move right to board comments, since.
We're on board discussion, Mr. President.
Board discussion. All right, anybody have anything?
I actually do. Um, so I wanna just reply to Ms. Thompson in regards to her comment in yesterday's meeting. When HR and superintendent said they had already done the state, the background checks, and the state contacted us, my statement was in no way harassing or harassing or threatening, because my statement was, it is in my opinion, and I'm disgusted with this board, that they would approve to waste more money on a job that has already been done and has always been done that way. Why is this board refusing, refusing to spend money on the children for equipment needed for learning? Is beyond me, is what my statement was. And the definition, I want to be clear, of harassment is legal, illegal behavior towards a person that causes mental or emotional suffering. Also threatening definition is a statement of an intention to inflict pain, injury, or damage. And truth of the matter, so I took it, so I really wanna ask Ms. Thompson, Mrs. Thompson, where you were, or where was this board when our board president screamed over and over, shut up to me? It was on the news, where were you when it was cruel, harassed?
That, 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 I am gonna, because that's a total exaggeration, and I have moved three times to close the meeting.
Did any of you publicly or privately apologize to me?
Point of order, point of order, point of order. All right. Robert's rules, number one rule is no personal attacks.
No one publicly apologized to me.
Point of order.
Cannot mute me, board president, I am discussing this.
Yes, I can, point of order.
No, you can't, no one. Cannot mute. You cannot mute me during a public meeting. No one.
Okay, I muted everyone, Mr. Kimball called point of order. So I'm gonna unmute Mr. Kimball, and he called point of order, so I didn't know how to unmute. Just wanna remind you that we're recording this meeting, so I'm gonna just unmute Mr. Kimball, and you just, I'm gonna unmute one at a time, so I'm gonna mute Mr. Kimball. Mr. Kimball, you're still muted, one second. Okay, go ahead, you called point of order.
Robert's Rules of Order, the first item is no personal attacks. I personally took that as a personal attack to say, you were disgusted with all of us for voting for updating the background checks that may or may not have been done properly. And just to set the record straight on that, what is the cost that we've incurred from running all those through IChat, Mr. Abdullah had? Zero.
We've not paid anything, okay. I'm gonna, can I unmute? And then if, if trustees continue, then maybe do another point of order, just that way it doesn't look like I'm just muting all the trustees just because I want to. Okay?
Go, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask to unmute, you're gonna have to unmute yourself, so Barbara, Beth, Bill, Gloria, Gloria, Mark Holcomb, and I believe I've, okay, so Mr. Kimball has a floor, sorry, sorry, guys.
All right. Anybody else on board discussion?
I'm not finished. You cannot call point of order on anything that I.
Yeah, 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 yes, I can.
No, you.
You're, you're wrong, but, but go ahead and finish, go ahead and finish, go ahead and finish your thoughts, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm saying that did any of anybody on this board publicly or privately apologize to me for what I have withstood on this board? And the emotional that I had to go through that evening for four minutes while our board president told me to shut up several, several times.
Okay, are you, are you finished?
For now, yes.
Okay, I, I wanna address that because that meeting, I was making the motion to end the meeting. You kept talking over me louder and louder after you had already had your board comments uninterrupted, I might add. And after three times of trying to call the motion to end the meeting, and you talked louder and louder, review the, the video, yeah. I told you to be quiet, shut up. No two ways about that. All right, anyone else? All right, should we move into board comments then? Board comments, let's go ahead and start with.
Mr. Kimball is muted, and she lost.
Oh, okay, hold on, hold on, I see a hand waving, hold on, I thought I unmuted the trustees.
You did.
Bill, Gloria.
Unmute yourself, Beth.
Oh, Beth, unmute yourself.
Mr. Abdullah had, you have.
You're in.
You have to stop muting me.
I muted you the one time for mute, point of order.
Nope, I got muted again. And Mr. Kimball, Mr. Kimball, my question to you is, would you be okay if someone told your mother or sister to shut up repeatedly? Or would anybody?
If they, if they were beginning, and you were at that meeting, yes. And let's move on from this, we don't need to rehash this forever.
Or would, no, because, because I expect an apology from you and the board members that allowed this to go on.
You are never gonna get one, so let's move on.
Okay, so my question to the board is that, and especially Gloria, who claims that I was harassing her, you think that that's okay, Gloria, for him to speak to your mother or your sister and tell them to shut up?
My whole problem was with your demeanor and the way you were accusing us and just being thoroughly disgusted with our vote. We vote the way we wanna vote. I don't chastise you for your votes. I don't expect that you will chastise us.
My question was, do you think it was okay for him to talk to me that way and allow it on this board?
You were both out of control that night. You were as out of control as he was. And I had you talk to me and Adwina in an unprofessional tone when Adwina was first in hot, was, when she was first hired. It's unacceptable, the way you talk to people sometimes.
I would, I would like to hear Adwina on that. Ms. Castle, how about you? Do you think that was appropriate?
Now, this, this is not an interrogation of all board members. If you've got something to discuss that's board-related or school-related.
It is board-related, I'm a board member.
We're, we're not gonna have this interrogation of everybody.
I am.
Let's move on.
I am a board member, and this is a discussion, this is the time we discuss these items. So I'm asking Ms. Castle, Mr. Holcomb, Ms. Pittman, any of you have anything to say about this?
Tell I was called racist that night.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Barb.
Um, it's unfortunate that the choice of words that Mr. Kimball used were quote-unquote, shut up. But I think at that point of the meeting, frustration was, was at a high level for everyone concerned, and I believe when it happened, I can only speak for myself, I was, I kind of was numb, it was like a numbing thing, it was just, the meeting had been long, there'd been a lot of tension, there'd been a lot of discussion, everybody was tired. And I don't believe the choice of words by Mr. Kimball were exactly the most professional, however, I do understand the frustration he was experiencing at the time. For that, I'm sorry, Mark, for the words that you picked, but I support what you did. It was just a matter of the meeting was over, it needed to end. And you ended it the best you could, and I'm not defending or, or trying to make anybody out better than someone else, I'm just saying the meeting was getting, was very tense, we had police there, needed to end, and people needed to clear the building. And I understand your frustration, Mr. Kimball, I'm sorry, Beth, that those words were sharp and very cutting. Um, that, I'm sorry for, thank you.
And as requested by Mr. Butcher, I did send my apology.
Muted again.
He's muted, Beth is muted again, please.
Don't look at me.
Don't look at me, I've not muted you.
Beth is muted again.
No, that's not me. That is not me, Beth. Not me. That was, that, that was, that was not me. Hold on.
There she is.
Yeah, that was not me, Beth, I swear to you, I promise, that was not me.
Okay, well, I keep getting muted, and I'm videotaping it, so I keep getting muted, but, okay, so, Ms. Castle, I understand that you agreed that that was okay for him to say then, I guess, apparently.
No, not the words he chose, I'm just saying, I understood his frustration. And better words could have been chosen, those words were very cutting, and I'm sure, Mark, if he had it to do over, and he probably would not have chosen those particular words. He was trying to end the meeting, and it was getting out of hand.
Hey, Beth, how about that, that same night, my first night, Mr. Pittman nominated me, and I got home and the next, next day, I'm a racist on the news.
Yeah, thanks for making me look bad, Mark.
Yeah.
But, Mark, I personally apologize to you for that, that had nothing to do with me, I never said that.
But.
But I, but, but as a board member, I came to you and apologized that you were called that, as you recall. I apologize to you for that.
Well, you didn't need to, you didn't do it.
I'm just saying that I, Ms. Thompson was, Mrs. Thompson was accusing me of harassing, which she will not acknowledge, all the harassment and screaming has been done to me, I just wanted to acknowledge that. We don't have to continue it because I know I will never get an apology from this board, that's all, we can move on.
All right, anyone else? Now, all right, I'm gonna go into board comments, and you might as well continue, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
I said all I had to say.
All right, Mr. Pittman?
Uh, I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Ms. Castle?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Holcomb? No, I'm done. All right, Mrs. Thompson?
I'm all set.
All right, and Mrs. Ott has not returned to the meeting, is that correct, Angel?
Yeah, she's not, uh, um, I just said last at six forty-three. I said, okay, log in when you get to your nephews, please. That was at six forty-three, I've not heard since, so.
Well, they may, in fact, I believe she lives near her nephew, and they may have an outage in that whole area. But, all right, so that leaves me. I wanna address comments that were made yesterday and are now posted on Facebook about my relationship with a broker, Larry Campbell. And the fact that the land deal, the insinuation that I collected money on that, that's completely untrue, and Mr. Campbell is willing to sign an affidavit to it. And my van has been parked there for a year and a half before the land purchase. And I will also point out that Mr. Abdullah had the idea to purchase that land, not myself. But I have no connection to that, no financial benefit, I know that's hard for some people to believe. That there can't be a transaction where you know someone where you don't pick anything up on the deal, but that's called integrity. And I have to say, I'm really shocked at the people that are making these accusations because I'm not the board member that had an ATM machine in the high school making fees off to students. I'm not the one that used to swim before school every day and had his own key even after leaving the board. And I just think this whole thing is just extremely petty, and if someone has something to say about it or wants to file a complaint, be my guest, file a complaint. It was no secret to this whole entire board of my friendship with, with Larry Campbell, who I worked for twenty years ago. And that's all I'm gonna say on the matter, and that's it for me. So can we get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mrs. Thompson? We'll get a vote?
Yes, Mr. President, Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Holcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Castle and Mr. Kimball, you're already, you said yes to, okay. The Ms. Castle?
I made the motion.
Motion carries six zero.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.